This is a meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Ed, January 10th, 2019. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to union negotiations and confidential employee matters?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Closed? Motion carries. We are now in executive session. Welcome to the meeting of the Hyde Park Board of Education meeting, January 10th, 2019. Would everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How do I join them?
Well, we do not have any agenda modifications. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any discussion? All those in favor? Closed? So upcoming events. On Tuesday, January 15th, North Park Elementary's Winter Concert is at FDR. On Wednesday, January 16th, the DLT will be meeting at the district office. And also, there will be scheduling orientation at FDR. On Thursday, January 17th, Ralph R. Smith's Winter Concert will be at FDR. Monday, January 21st, there will be no school as it is Martin Luther King Day. And Thursday, January 24th, will be the next Board of Education meeting at the district At this time, we'll have Pride. Patrick?
So, the North Park 3rd grade classes created projects and writing assignments that will be featured at the Statsburg Library on Saturday, the 12th, at 2:00 p.m. It will be right after the Raptors and Reptiles program. It will be a special exhibit for Bald Eagle Projects. On March 1st, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. is the Claudio Caras Gala. It's usually at the Locust Grove. There are volunteer needed, so juniors and seniors at FDR. On December 21st was the annual Badminton Tournament for FDR. This is a really fun event. Teams get all dressed up. They get into the holiday spirit. This year, the winners were Paul Teary and Vincent Schneider. Paul Sanford committed to Marist College. He'll be doing cross-country and running track and field. He'll be signing his national letter of intent next Friday, January 18th. Also on December 21st, the following FDR wrestlers had wins for FDR's first home wrestling match in more than 30 years versus Arlington. Hector Antonio Sanchez, Jack Nesbit, Mason Enkler, Tyler Hall, Liam Woods, and Brian Quito Romero. On January 3rd, the FDR wrestlers traveled to Red Hook for a try match with Sardis. The track and field team traveled to Staten Island on Saturday to compete in the Freedom Games at the Ocean Breeze Athletic Complex. The day was full of personal bests and strong performances that included medals for Sierra Wine, Paul Sanford, and Chris Onish. Chris's throw of 47 feet in the weight throw also set a school record for that event. Sarah Trainer led the way for the team finishing overall, first overall in 3,000 meter and 600 meter runs. She was named the most outstanding female athlete at the meet, which hosted over 2,000 runners. The boys varsity basketball team, they had a victory over Highland on Tuesday, 53 to 49. Connor Harris had a game high of 15 points. Ron Vesby had 10 points, and Mike Gertz added seven. The next game is tomorrow at 5:30 at New Paltz. For girls' basketball, they played at home versus Highland on Tuesday. The final score was 66 to 42. Their high scorers were Cameron Hammond, Kelsey Demels, Jalen Daubin, and Maya Stewart. Their next game is also tomorrow. It's home against New Paltz at 5:30. For gymnastics team, they had an impressive win last night against Walk Hill. This improves their overall record to two wins and no losses. And for the boys swim team, they beat Goshen yesterday, 89 to 72. They won 10 out of the 11 events, and they swim against Ryan Beck on Monday. And that's all.
Great, thank you. Is this one working? Yeah. Just, that was great, Patrick. You got most of it. I got a very nice thank you letter from the Dutchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce for the string performance at the annual breakfast event. It really was exceptional. Just a couple of community events for families that happened recently in other elementary schools. The Vaniver Caravan Dance Residency at Violet Avenue ended last night in a student performance for families. And Melissa Lawson on January 3rd had her second of a series of four principal challenges. This is in conjunction with her building leadership team. And the one on January 3rd was to make vehicles of some sort out of pasta. And the vehicle that rolled the furthest won the prize, but it was well attended by families. And it's the design of the principal's challenge is to have families work on a project, and then they come in for an evening. So this is her second. This is the first year they're doing it. She did tell me the next one will be more aligned with arts, but the first two were more aligned with engineering. That's it for Pride.
Is there any other Pride? Okay, on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, we're very pleased. We've been updating people about the capital project. Just an hour and a half ago, we signed off on the state ed submission for the HVAC project at North Park Elementary. We have been in touch with the state education department. We are going for the third-party review. We've been assured, as much as they can give assurances, that this should not take long to get through the review process. So the potential to begin the North Park Elementary HVAC project this summer looks The Hyde Park Education Foundation met last night. Several of the principals were there. They are gearing up for their first-ever rollout of the teacher grant process. So the teaching staff will receive information in the very, very near future. You will be able to apply for a grant from the Hyde Park Education Foundation. Similar system to possibly community foundations, but not the same. But if you're familiar with applying for community foundation grants, this will be easy for you to do. But they plan to, there's a whole process for them to review and award the grants. And announcements will be made in May. The grants, the process will be that you'll apply for the grant this spring for a project that you'll do in the fall. And at their second annual Field of Honor on Memorial Day weekend, they will present, and anybody who's available to actually physically come for the presentation, they'll present and announce the awardees for the grants. Speaking of the Hyde Park Education Foundation, they are hosting a family event at the Roosevelt Theater on February 2nd, Groundhog's Day, at 10:00 a.m. They are hosting the movie Romeo and Juliet, and it is open to all families. It's just by donation, entry by donation if you choose. So anybody who wants to go out and see a movie on Groundhog's Day, February 2nd at 10:00 a.m., the Hyde Park Education Foundation is featuring that. I'd like to bring to the board's attention two NISBA advocacy positions or thinking. The governor vetoed the ability to have a Bosse's Capital Project exempt from the tax cap. All of our building projects are exempt from our tax cap formula, but a Bosse's Capital Project is not, and he very recently vetoed that. Should you be so inclined, anybody, residents or members of the board, we have a number to call Cuomo's office if you would like to encourage him to reconsider that. The other advocacy agenda that NISBA has has to do with the APPR, the Annual Professional Performance Review for Teachers. The New York State School Boards Association is advocating decoupling completely and permanently state ed testing to teacher evaluation. So again, all this can be found on NISBA's website, and if anybody chooses to take action, you can read about those two advocacy agenda items. And just from the strategic planning front, you mentioned that we have a strategic planning meeting next Wednesday. The instructional team met just yesterday. We made great progress. We reviewed all of our PD for this year. That has been evaluated, and we have the results. We began planning for next year, and the most exciting portion of this is we've really put pen to paper to move our implementation of the critical thinking rubric into the classroom for next year. So the staff will be hearing a lot more about that gearing up for our March Superintendent's Conference Day. That's all I have.
Can you, excuse me, can you or Linda explain the impact of the veto, of what that means to our district and the budget and our tax cap, so everyone understands that?
So the Dutchess Bosse's just recently had their capital project approved by the voters in the county, and the Hyde Park School District is responsible for paying for part of that. So if it was our own capital project, we wouldn't have to include that in our tax cap. However, because it's a Dutchess Bosse's project, our budget or our tax cap is still limited, so the amounts that we pay towards it have to fit into the tax cap. So if our tax cap is 2% this year, that has to include the portion that we're paying towards the Bosse's project.
And does it start this year?
Well, sorry, when I say this year, the budget we're working on this year. Our first payment is due in July of 2019, so that's next school year's budget.
So Linda will include the specific financials as we go in through budget season, like the specific dollar where it plays out in our budget, although the formula's not easy.
Yeah, the board will have to decide how we fund it, if we want to finance it or fund it through our budget.
It's also worth knowing, this is the second time the governor has vetoed this bill, which has passed both through the Assembly and the Senate at both times.
Has he given any rationale for his veto?
You know, there is...
Does it affect that I can't?
No, he did give, you know, and I have to admit, I can't recite it. And I don't know that I, it didn't gain a lot of attention on my part, but there was, if you Google it, you can find that he did have a response. I don't, Gregor, do you remember?
I don't recall, other than it didn't stick as...
Yeah, I read it, I remember reading it, and it just seemed pretty boilerplate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can get that.
Yeah, that's true. We can get it and circulate it.
Yep.
Any other questions? Going on to next, Netherwood's Elementary School update. Christine?
Welcome to, oh, that's very close. Welcome to Netherwood. It's so good to have you here. We're happy to host you this evening. I think this should work. There we go. So this year, our first mission of our building leadership team, which we'll talk about a little bit in more detail later in the presentation, is that Netherwood's mission and vision haven't been updated in quite some time. So that's been something that we've been working on during faculty meetings, and as part of our building leadership team goal is updating that and making sure that it aligns with the district's mission, but also reflects the individual community at Netherwood. So at our faculty meetings in the morning, we started with brainstorming what we do as teachers and what we do here at Netherwood in our daily practices, and made a quite enormous list of all the things that we do as part of our day. And then we broke that down at the next meeting and over a course of a few meetings as to how do we go about accomplishing that, what are we working on as a faculty, what are the important things, and how are we doing that important work? And where we got to just before the holidays was categorizing those hows and whats, and looking at why those are the choices that we make with our time with children, and what are our motivations behind the practices that we have here at the building, and prioritizing our whys. So each group that got a list of the whys that we came up with categorized them into a few categories, and then prioritized them as what we see as the most important parts of our job day to day. Those priorities then went to the building leadership team, where we've been talking about them, and actually, our meeting was earlier today, where we were working on putting them together in more of a coherent statement that we can edit and wordsmith a bit to then present back to the faculty for review and see if it jives with what we all believe about the importance of our job and our mission here at Netherwood. So right now, it's in progress, and we're following the district mission, obviously, but looking to have a more personalized mission as we move towards the end of the school Our enrollment this year is 274 students. That's our current enrollment. 227 are white, 45 Hispanic, 25 black, 15 multiracial, and then we have three Asian, two American Indian or Alaskan Native, and two Pacific Islanders. So our demographics have been changing over the last few years, and we are adjusting to make sure that all of our students feel welcome and supported in our building. The ELA test from last spring was, the data is here, so the blue bar is our results from 15-16. The red bars are 16-17, and the yellow bars are from the spring. They are grouped by grade, so 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade results, but with those, you have cohorts that move through. So the 3rd graders in 15-16 were the 4th graders in 16-17, and then are the 5th graders in 17-18. Historically, district and statewide, the 3rd grade to 5th grade results do change. We've seen that pattern here. We are looking at it and examining our results, and those are our testing results. In math, we had improvement in 3rd and 5th grade last year, a slight decrease in our 4th grade results, but again, those are different tests and different cohorts of kids as they move through the grades. Science has been a strong point and continues to be a strong point. We're up in the high 90s for our proficiency rate in science. And our test refusals are still a continuing concern, as they are district-wide. We had a decrease in our 4th grade test refusals, but it's an increase from where they were when they were 3rd graders, both in English and in math. So they refused at a higher rate in 4th grade than they had in 3rd grade. But our 5th graders went down each year, so there was a higher rate of refusal when last year's 5th grade cohort was in 3rd grade. Fewer of them refused in 4th grade, and then fewer of them refused in 5th grade. So some of our cohorts are showing that more kids are participating, but than others, it's not the same trend. So we're following that. We're certainly discussing it. And it does impact our growth score as a building, because the students that refuse the test, they can't get a growth score, because you have to see where they were the year before, and then where they are the following year. So when we look at the building's growth score, that doesn't include any kids who didn't take the test last year, but it also doesn't include any kids who didn't take the test the year before, because if they changed and took the test as a 4th grader, but you don't have a 3rd grade test to compare it to. When we were looking and digging into our data and our growth score, not all the same kids refused both years, so there's more kids that aren't included than just the refusals from last year. We do have data for all of our students for all of their years in maps, and that gives us more immediate data to look at and do real-time assessments. Almost all of our students take it three times a year, so that we have a fall result, a mid-year result, as well as an end-of-year result. And we also can do the skills navigator tests in the middle for any students that we have concerns about. So our maps data is more complete, and these are the SLO scores for our building by grade level from the maps data, which we were effective in our maps data, and the different grade level breakdown is up there for you. So data is important, and having our students grow is really the most important thing we do as teachers. So things that we've been working on this year, we are fortunate this year that we added a full-time AIS math teacher to our building, and we had previously only had teaching assistant support, so that has been huge. Michael Stephan was hired into that position, so he's been working with all of our grade levels on supporting our students, both pushing into the classroom to support students there and doing small group work with students who are struggling. He's going to be presenting a number of PDs this springtime on math progressions, and I think the first one is on bar models. And there was a presentation at Violet by all of the AIS math teachers, I believe it was last week, and then ours is coming up about in a month. So it went very well the other day at Violet Avenue with all of the AIS math teachers collaborating, and I'm looking forward to having that come to our building. We also had two teachers attend the Teachers College Readers and Writers Workshop in Reading this summer, and they are planning on doing presentations in addition to our Generation Ready Consultant this spring to support reading. And our librarian has been doing presentations on techno, or will be doing presentations on technology, as well as the tech integration specialist from Bosse's who comes in. So we've been doing a lot of work in the morning on supporting our students. I already spoke about our mission and vision statement goal for our BLT. Our other goal is, at the end of last year, we had put together a survey for families where they were able to tell us about what was most important to them for engaging in the building. And the data showed some things that were what we expected, but then also some surprises. So one of the things that, not that it's terribly surprising, but that we hadn't anticipated was that the idea that was most interesting to our families about engaging in the building was presenting on their careers. So we are exploring the possibility of a career fair later in the school year that would bring in community members or parents to talk about their careers. That was our next goal. We also had, our Greg Tang Family Night was in the fall, and that was a new program for this building. And we had a STEAM night in the fall as well, that we collaborated with the students from Marist to come and put together interactive STEAM projects to present to our students. And families were able to attempt a challenge where they had to build a floating wind machine out of various paper products that were restricted. And then they came in, they tried theirs, we had a contest, and then they were able to explore the STEAM projects presented by the Marist students. That was two of the things that we've been working on there. Technology integration is of vast importance in the building. The integrated, the interactive TVs allow students to really engage with content, manipulate numbers, manipulate images on the board, and work together. We also, one of the interesting things that they've been working on is interactive book clubs, where they are sharing documents back and forth using a program called Seesaw, and they're able to create reactions to what they're reading through drawing, through presentations, through slides that they're creating and sharing in a shared, in the program, and they can respond to what each other are saying about the book through that, as well as their discussions in person. We have the Honoshone Fiction Series by our 4th graders. They've been collaborating and using Google Docs to increase their editing, so that they're able to track their revisions and really dig into their writing. And they are, oh, we just had a wonderful PD on Clever, and that was done by the Bosse's Tech Integrator, and a lot of teachers came to me right after that, just that day, they had incorporated it right into their classrooms. So those programs are wonderful. I believe most of you were able to come and tour the building over the summer before we started and see the bathrooms before they were in full use, but we did have our bathrooms renovated in an artistic sense by Elena Martinez, who's a high school student at FDR, who was doing it for her gold project, and recruited a number of students with great artistic ability to paint our bathrooms with positive messages. We have our marigold seed project, which I will acknowledge, right around the holidays, I fell short on keeping up with it, but we're getting back on track now. So right before Thanksgiving, the students, they get marigold seeds if they do something that helps other people grow. So marigolds are plants that help other people, that help other plants grow. They're called companion plants. So anytime a student is witnessed or caught doing something that helps somebody grow, it could be helping them on a bad day, it could be helping them with an assignment, it could be figuring out a positive solution to a social problem. So two kids who were arguing but sat down, figured it out, and came to a resolution, they still helped each other grow. So even though it started as a negative, they turned it into a positive, and they get a package of marigold seeds. So before Thanksgiving, when the ground got cold enough, the students were able to plant the marigold seeds that they had collected, and nature cooperating, they will be sprouting in the springtime, so cross your fingers for that. We are developing a lot of great relationships with our 5th grade kindergarten buddies program, where they get to be good role models, and they wrote books around the holidays that they read to their kindergarten partners and helped them identify patterns and make different projects that reinforce their math concepts and also build their social emotional growth. So that is something that's been wonderful to see. We have a few 5th grade buddies who still now, even though the bus buddies program is done, because our kindergarteners are more independent, they are continuing to meet their kindergarten buddies and walk them to the bus, just because they want to be great kids. So it's great to see them acting as positive role models. And our Netherwood newspaper has been restarted by our 5th graders, and they are very excited. It's actually a few kids who, over the summer, the rising 4th graders volunteer if they want to be tour guides for new students who are moving into the district or transitioning to the building from another building in the district. So our 5th graders volunteered over the summer to come in and give tours and help new students get acclimated. And they had made a Everything You Wanted to Know About Netherwood booklet on their own, and those students had so much fun making that booklet that they decided they wanted to restart the newspaper. So look for that. It'll be great. I'm excited. Community collaborations, the STEAM Fair with Marist was a wonderful collaboration. I'm looking forward to continuing that partnership. We have a 3rd grade community garden project that we collaborate with the Culinary Institute on, and they've actually recently approached us on expanding that project, so that's something we're looking into. We had the Cat's Band Dance Residency. We've had local, one of our, one of our parents is anthropologist. She came and spoke about her job and what she does with one of our classes. The Rotary Club has been wonderful. They continue to donate dictionaries to our 3rd graders, and many other community partnerships that are really important to Netherwood.
Before you go to questions, I just want you to share with the board, and I didn't see it up there, and I don't mean to embarrass you or surprise you on the spot.
That's all right.
But you may come into Netherwood and find Christine walking around with a golden basketball or... or a golden cafeteria tray. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, that was actually an initiative started with Sherri Rowe, one of our lunch monitors, who wanted a way to positively celebrate the kids who are doing the right thing. The basketball hasn't taken off as much, but the golden lunch tray, we're pretty consistent with. So, they get a certain number of points if they are making good choices in the cafeteria, and then at the end of about two weeks, if they have the most points, there's a golden lunch tray that has been beautifully decorated in elementary school fashion with stickers and rhinestones and bedazzled, that they can hang outside of their classroom if they are the classroom with the golden lunch tray. This week, it's Ms. Manning, she got it on Wednesday. I don't think we moved it from Ms. Angarola's room, but it is, it got there. Okay, so I didn't move it, but they, they got announced, and they are the golden lunch tray winners of the week.
For the MAPS scores?
Yes.
For kindergarten, is there a way to break that down between kids that went through the pre-K versus not? Do you have the ability to see that? To see if it's having a positive impact or not?
Whether they attended the pre-K program and then are doing better in kindergarten. I don't know with this data, because I don't, I don't have the SLO formula, but with the, with the MAPS scores we have, we could certainly look at the trajectory of those students and the ones we know that attended versus didn't, and look at that.
And I've been providing that, you know, I provided that last year for the first time, and we had a few years of data, and I plan on doing that in the fall when we actually have our first pre-K class 3rd grade results. So, we've been using MAPS as that continuum of students who participated in pre-K compared to overall. So, you'll see that for the district.
I can definitely say anecdotally that it has a great benefit for the kids when they're coming in, and, you know, we have an orientation in the spring where we do some just informal assessment, and then again, in the fall when they take the MAPS. And there's definitely an impact, the students, they're ready, they're more ready.
Good.
Any other questions?
What does the basketball signify?
That was, that was the best behavior out at recess, but because they all play, when they're, when they're in the cafeteria, they're sitting by class, it's easy to identify. But positively, they don't play by class outside at recess, they're all mingling between grade levels, between classes, and so it just was difficult to say who was doing the best job sharing and being a good sport and all of that. So, it was much more.
Challenging.
Yeah, challenging to decide. You know, if there's a kickball game, it goes really well, everybody's shared, and it's three different classes that are playing together, who gets the basketball. We couldn't divide it in half, it would have not worked very well.
Any other questions? Thank you, Christine.
Thank you so much.
Next, we'll have a presentation on the athletic trainer update from Mr. Cunningham,
Good evening. So, just got a few slides here that kind of give you an update on our athletic trainer now, who's in her second year, working with our student athletes. Our mission statement, I'm sure you're all very familiar with. Okay, responsibilities, obviously, there are many responsibilities for athletic trainer. One of the major ones is responsible for the concussion management protocol of athletes. The trainer works in collaboration with the nurse's office and coaches with any concussion injuries that involve an athlete. They're in constant communication with each other throughout that process. As you know, there's a, we have a process, a policy in place here at the district that it's, they do a very good job communicating with each other, and it's very, it's done, very well done. The beginning phases, when the trainer started, we met as a group, it was myself, the trainer, and the nurses came in, and we kind of just set something in place, so the communication from the beginning really helped out with the process from last fall. Prior to 2017-18, the athletic trainer was only available to athletes till 3:30 Monday through Friday, and was only available at varsity and JV football games, boys and girls basketball games, and gymnastics meets. So, now, our athletic trainer is more full-time, she shows up around 1:00, 1:30 in the afternoon every day, Monday through Friday, whenever we're in session, and is available five to six days a week for all practices and home contests, as well as all weekend home events. For example, when we host our big Oval Office Track Meet, she's there all day for that event. Our gymnastics invitationals on the weekends, so she attends everything that we have that's a big event. She starts the first day of August, or the first day of sports in August, and ends the last day of practices or an event in the spring. So, there quite a bit. She currently provides care and treatment of injuries at practices and games. Again, there's, like I said, there's many responsibilities. She conducts an initial assessment of an athlete's injury or illness and determines whether they should be referred to a physician for definitive diagnosis and treatment. Again, it's a recommendation to the parents and to the coach and to the, and to the athlete. No way is it forced upon them, but she highly recommends that the course of action that needs to be taken with the injury. Again, applies protective or injury preventive devices, you know, tapes, bandages, braces for ankles, fingers, and wrists. Provides preventative and rehabilitation exercises and treatments for injuries. So, for example, if you were to come over to our, to FDR around 2:15, 2:30, student athletes who are, who are working through injuries are in her office, she'll take them to our weight room to work on things, she'll work with them in the gym. So, they got, the kids really got into the routine right from the beginning of how to care for the injuries, so it's been very helpful. Obviously, evaluates athlete's readiness to play, again, communication with the athlete and the coaches. Acts as a liaison between the school nurse, the physicians, myself, the athletes and their parents. Again, communication is, is very well done. She's not afraid to call a parent, to speak to them, and to really go through, you know, this is what happened, these are some of the things that need to take place. And I believe, you know, a majority of our parents have been very receptive to her giving, you know, the advice that she gives. Again, one of the major things, a couple of major things, is she's responsible for the budgeting. She hands me what she wants to order for the following year, obviously, I go through it like I do with anything else, and then she provides any of the medical kits that we need to have on-site for home and away games. So, those are the responsibilities. Impact on the athletic program. Provides a much-needed comfort level to coaches during practices and games. Again, before I, so, before I started here, at each of the schools I was at, again, I was kind of a part-time trainer, coaches had a lot of things that, you know, they had to worry about. And coming here and having a full-time trainer, I can see the, the coach's comfort level with injuries now, whereas before, where, you know, it might have been, it's a lot of pressure of making a decision about things, but having a trainer on-site really helps with the coach in a situation where maybe they didn't feel comfortable making the decision for a student athlete. So, having a trainer there is, is just, had an unbelievable impact, and it's just helped the overall quality of our programs. We worked together with, with our trainer this summer on an emergency action plan for all, to give to our coaches at seasonal coaches meetings. This is something that we put in the place this summer. It's a packet that basically goes through each site that we have a competition at, kind of goes through the, where the, so for example, at FDR, we have our fields, the locations, where our AEDs are located, kind of gives everything, if something were to happen, where you need to go and what you need to do. So, each site, there's a couple of things that we forgot, so we're improving it as we go along, but again, this was given to our safety, our district safety committee at the last meeting to review as well. So, I think it's really had a nice impact. Again, I recommend to the coaches to keep this with them at all times. Just keep it with you, you know, it's, I'm not asking to memorize it, but it's good to have on hand to refer to. So, it's again, another safety piece that our trainer has added to our programs. She has met with individual teams to talk about nutrition, proper nutrition, proper exercises. For example, just this past Monday, she went in to meet with the wrestling team to talk about proper neck exercises, because when she watched the match that we had, she saw that sometimes you get into some crazy situations, so she wanted to give them some preventative exercises. That's one thing she's done, she's met with our cross-country team to talk about nutrition. She's met with, you know, again, she takes the initiative to meet with the teams and to really work with our student athletes. One other thing that she, that we provide, which is, which is kind of nice, is we do have interns from Marist for each season, they're here quite a bit. You know, when, when they're in session, right now, they're not here, but when they come back, she averages about one or two, and they're there every day. So, they're getting a nice, you know, we're getting out there, and Marist has been, you know, the kids have been great that they've brought here.
We actually saw some of our former graduates working with her.
Yep. So, it's been, it's been a good experience. Then, to continue the last couple of statements here, you know, our student athletes do feel comfortable approaching our trainer, and, you know, sometimes, when you, when you first start out, you know, there was a little bit of reluctance because they weren't really familiar with the process, it was something new. But as it went on throughout last year, I felt, and even now, I just see the comfort level that she has and our student athletes have in communicating with her. And again, overall, the, the training services have improved, the quality of our athletic programs, and will continue to provide the much-needed services our student athletes deserve. And, and that's...
That's good.
I'm hitting the wrong button, there we are. Any questions, comments?
So, Tom, what do you think is the overall, what's the overall improvement to our athletic program by having this athletic trainer?
The overall improvement?
What is the thing that stands out the most?
Me, it's, I think it's the safety and well-being of our student athletes. You know, a lot of times, you know, our coaches are trained in first aid CPR, they're given the basic things that are required, obviously, to have your coaching certificate. But, you know, sometimes there's injuries where our, a coach, like I said before, if a trainer isn't there to kind of, to help or to communicate with, that impacts the safety of our student athletes. So, I think having that overall, the overall impact is, to me, is safety. And again, it's, it's helping our student athletes in all types of situations. Another piece is getting back into play, the rehab process, where if we didn't have a trainer, somebody for our student athletes to go to, they wouldn't be doing the proper exercises to heal properly, to get back into competition.
Yeah, my daughter would have benefited from that. Have you noticed, I mean, do you have any figures, noticed any changes in the statistics about prevention of injuries, and, I mean, it's, you may not have enough time yet.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've noticed it from, I mean, I don't have the stats in front of me, but I've, I've definitely noticed that our, when our athletes do return, the, the chance for the injury to happen again has gone down. So, again, I think that has to do with the proper rehab exercises to get back into play.
Are we assured in the same trainer year to year?
Yes, we have been. So far, we've had her two years.
It sounds like there's a commitment there, and I was wondering if it could change, or is it just because orthopedic services associates, where we have associates, just sends that person, or?
Well, I do know that.
Commitment that said, this person is going to be the FDR or a trainer.
I know, before I got here, you know, Eric Romanino was in charge of interviewing a few people through, that orthopedic associate sent with the intention of her staying here. That's, that's, that's pretty much how it's set up. So, I mean, she may, again, orthopedic, she works for orthopedic associates, you know, you know that piece. Does she have the option, I think, if orthopedic associates came to her and wanted to move her, that, that could happen, but I don't think, that would have to come from her, I think she's very happy where she is.
Okay, great.
You know?
Now, you mentioned the majority of people were happy with the...
Why, yeah, I said majority.
I mean, are people not happy with the guidance she's giving in rehab?
No, I think, I would say a high percentage, I would say majority. I can't say everybody, you know, I don't like using that.
No, no negative comments, nothing bad.
No, not at all. I, I think more, it's of, it's an educational type question, okay, why, why is she recommending this, this, and this, and, you know? And she's been good with following up, I've been good, just, hey, we're just looking out for the best interest, these are just recommendations. Again, to, you don't, you can use them however you want.
Tom, I can't remember her name.
Amanda Tiffany.
Okay. I, I have to say that, you know, in addition to safety, just the expansion of coverage, I have yet to go to any competition and not see an athletic trainer there, and I do have to comment on her professionalism, her demeanor, her attentiveness. Her eyes are on the court, her eyes are on the mat, her, you know, it's the level of supervision that she puts into her job, I mean, and she takes pride, and her, her demeanor is so calm and reassuring, she's, she's just, she's just a pleasure to watch in action. So, for me, it's, it's just been so reassuring to see her all the time and working with all of our students, so, you know, it's just, it's like night and day for me.
Well, yeah, see, I didn't see beforehand, you know, but another thing is, she's experienced. I mean, there's just, she's been doing this for a long time, she's very good at it. It's, she's been very easy to work with.
Yeah.
For me personally. You know, she, she feels very comfortable coming to me and asking questions, or what can we do here or there? And another thing is, she's well-organized. You know, we, we set up our calendar athletic schedule, she follows it, and everything, she, she has yet to not be somewhere, which is a good thing.
That's a good thing.
I've noticed the response to her recommendations, particularly ever seeing and treating an athlete during a game, about, you know, parents come over, how is he, how is she, what's going on? And she'll make recommendations, like, you know, at this point, I would follow up with your physician and check it out. She's good about that, and I've heard her even question the kids when they come back there, have you seen the physician, what was he saying, you know? And with the, with the interns she gets here from Marist.
Oh, you've seen them, yeah.
Fantastic, good job, you know, you can see those kids grow in two or three days.
Yeah.
And she sits down, talks to them during the game, instructing them on things, you know, showing them how to get organized and stuff like that, and, and she allows them to do things that, you know, they're skilled enough to do, the tapings, the ankle taping and stuff like that. And it's an amazing progress, both for the school and for Marist program, the way she's growing it in the community, and it's catching on around, around the whole district.
Yeah, it is.
Not only the district, but all the athletic programs here in Dutchess County. They were all seeing the benefits and really being very forceful and getting the kinds of training, kinds of things they need for these kids, it's made a big difference, as you indicated, and the amount of time the kids are out and the condition they come back in, you see very few injuries that occur on a multiple, you know, day, oh, you did that last week, and you did it the week before. She's been a great addition.
Yeah.
I just, you know, now that, you know, we have an athletic trainer, you know, now it's just about being greedy, right? When she can't be somewhere, what do we do? Do we have a relationship with orthopedic associates that, you know, somebody, somebody can cover? I mean, how does that work?
All right, so, that's a good question, because she came in today, we talked about, glad you brought that up. Like, for today, she was looking to get away over the, right before the spring sports start, kind of that last week in February. So, we were going through the schedule, and she would look, she can look to get coverage from somebody through orthopedics associates. If she can't get it, unfortunately, you know, she wouldn't be able to, to go away, but now she's starting the process. But again, if something were to come up, we would look to, to get the coverage through orthopedic associates, and there's a network of athletic trainers, they, they reach out and really talk to each other and, and cover for each other.
Great.
Yep.
Great, thanks.
And the other, the other thing I've noticed is she, the other coaches, I think the word is spread about her capabilities, the other coaches are, you know, they're, they're looking for her when their students are injured, and usually, they don't have to look very far, like she's right there, looking at the kids, getting what they need, and talking to the coach about it, because it's a little more difficult message, because you can't be sure those kids' parents are here. But I see her communicating with the, with the coaches, saying, you know, this is, this is where it is, this is what he should do. So, he's sending the message on to the other school districts, and I know they're appreciative of that.
Do we send him a bill, too?
And also, I just want to add, being a student athlete, it is a big difference, because I think her first year was my junior year last year, and I remember on JV sophomore year, we would be sharing, like, one ice pack or something, and now, if you need from, to... we would be sharing like one ice pack or something and now, if you need from, to get ice or anything worse than that, she's always either in her office or on the field or on any other field if there's more sports going on. So it's really a big difference.
Oh, yeah, you firsthand experience. You saw it before and now you've seen it with it.
All right, thank you, Patrick.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you.
At this time, we'll open for public participation. Can I have a motion to open public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. If anybody would like to address the board, please come to the microphone and state your Seeing no responses, public participation is now closed and we're on to board discussion. Any board, board subcommittee reports? Okay, good. You want to start?
Oh, we, we met today with the special ed subcommittee, which includes the ELA students and got a very comprehensive update on the number of students and the breakdown of these students in the district and what's being done for them. And a couple of, I wouldn't use the word dire, but important warnings about where the trend is going and what the future could hold for the district, which I, hopefully she, Heather and Jen Christ and Amy will be putting together recommendations and, you know, heads up to this kind of program. Right now, we're currently able to handle that, but the, the point I think I took out of it was if we continue to see the increases in these students that we're seeing, we're going to be looking for more staff, unfortunately.
For those that don't, this is English language learners. They're new, coming new to the district and we've actually seen an increase of, there's no English at all coming in at much higher grade levels and they're, to say it was a dramatic increase in the last two years. And if we're looking at the truest trend, will probably continue, so we will need a lot more language teachers.
Actually, we're trying to pin it down. There was a student that came in at the ninth grade level and she left, went back to her home country for a while and came back in as an 11th grader. This is an 11th grader with limited English, well-spoken in her own language, and she's faced with trying to give complete five regents courses for graduation. And right now, she's on track for four of the five and she's got one to go. It's an amazing interaction between the, the student and the teachers in terms of the fact that, you know, they're trying to teach her in English, but she doesn't know the English. She's learning the courses in her home language and she's taking the tests in her home language. And the process is kind of interesting. She'll take the language, she'll take the test in her own language. In this case, it's Chinese, is it?
Chinese.
Chinese. They'll take the answers she provided, send them out to a translator, get the translation back and then evaluate the scores. And just, just amazing the, the way they were able to support this young lady and bring her so far in such a short time. And what's even, the other side of it is the state's position on this is, you know, adamant that they must do it and can't, there's no exceptions to that.
Take a picture of it, have it.
It could be very, very harmful as we continue to see these students with interrupted, interrupted learning, which is what you get like if a, if a student in a foreign country that we have now wound up in a refugee situation. You know, those refugee camps provide minimal support, you know, lucky you get food, shelter and clothing. There's no educational process there. So these students can, can go four, five or six years. They may have had some education as a second grader. They're coming to our school now as a seventh grader with absolutely no additional education from second grade on. And now you're faced with trying to come up with a program to try and catch this student up and get them to a point where they can graduate. And from what I've seen, from what I've heard, you know, programs have been provided, but most of the programs deal with big city situations where you have multiple, multiple students and you can deal with them in a, in a group, whereas we're dealing with two here and one there and different buildings and different groupings and so, you know. Our teachers have done an amazing job of adapting to help these students out and it's something we should be really proud of. But it does present a significant challenge and I feel a significant challenge made worse by the state's position of saying, it's a rule.
Jeff, I can report the Dutchess County School Board Association had their monthly meeting last Thursday. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but I can report that this Saturday, day after tomorrow, January 12th, at the Marriott Courtyard on Route 9 here in Poughkeepsie, there's going to be a legislative breakfast at 10:00 AM, at which time there'll be members of the association that will be speaking on behalf of various issues that the legislators are dealing with. There are a number of all of our local senators and state assembly members that have been invited and often we'll get some of the actual elected officials, but more often we'll get people from their office and it's our opportunity, we'll take that opportunity to provide them with information about bills that they're being presented with, including the BOSI's capital. You know, we'll continue to advocate for that. We feel strongly that it's a, appropriate to be passed. So it's available to all board members to attend on that Saturday morning, 10:00 AM. Nothing else, you get a good cup of coffee.
I also would like to state from the special ed committee, something I found out that when we place a student in the alternative high school and they've been there for the four years, they're not included in our graduation rates and other placements. I would, it would be nice to get some kind of report on that to the board and how they're doing.
We get two sets of data, so we have our FDR graduation rate and our Hyde Park Central School District graduation rate. So all of our students are included in the Hyde Park Central School District graduation rate. So Mr. Party doesn't report on that, but we have that data, so we can share that with you.
Thanks.
Jeff, if I could be, if you could tolerate me, I did find a response. There was a question as to what the governor's response was to the BOSI's capital. Quick Google search, I pulled that up and I'll try to read it quickly. Bill number 5965 would unnecessarily exclude, this is from the governor himself, would unnecessarily exclude BOSI's capital projects from a school district's tax levy. School districts must account for these capital expenses with their annual tax cap. By placing this burden outside of the cap, school districts will be allowed to collect additional revenue from property tax, taxpayers above the allowable tax cap, which runs contrary to the goals of the tax cap. Further, unlike individual school district capital expenditures, BOSI's capital expenditures are not subject to approval by district voters. For these reasons, I am constrained to veto this bill. So-
Did you read that last line?
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
So, all right. Further, unlike individual school district capital expenditures, BOSI's capital expenditures are not subject to approval by district voters. I agree. That's, that's incorrect. For these reasons, I am constrained to veto these bills. It's because as a district, the district is the county, the Dutchess, is Dutchess County. We all had the opportunity to vote on this capital project.
Right, for acceptance. We may not, the input is, you know, where it comes from, but that's, that's not, that's not really speaketh the truth.
Yeah. So we, I, I will tell you, the Dutchess County School Board Association, the New York State School Facilities Association, the New York State School Board Association are all going to continue to lobby for the passage of this bill. We think it's, it's very important that it be passed for the benefit of the students of the state.
But now we're faced with the problem that that bill, that capital project can influence the amount of spending the district can make and could limit us in things we need to do within our district.
Yes, exactly.
In spite of the fact that we all agreed that the project itself is something that's well beyond when it should have occurred.
Harry, could, would it be possible for you to email me that link or just?
If I could figure out how to email it, I would have already sent it to you, but I, I've got it.
Thank you.
I got Google down. Emailing sometimes is, but I'll get it to you.
Yeah, some of those links have got enough characters in it, like I could try to type it seven, eight words.
I'm not a Google mail guy. I'll work on it.
I'll help you.
All right, thank you. We can do it together. I know we can, Denise.
Okay.
Or you can do it and I'll watch.
Again, we still have to pay once again.
Any other committee reports? Okay, on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion at this time? Greer had asked to make a discussion comment on this.
Yeah, it was very moving and for me to not see Bob Mayer Hoffer's name next to the tennis coaching position. I thank Kevin Hart for stepping up. I just had my 40th high school reunion recently and he was coaching back then, too. So I'm sure we will be doing something for him at the athletic banquet at the end of the year, but it does mark the end of an era of having Bob Mayer Hoffer as our tennis coach. So I just, I didn't want to let it go just unnoticed that we just have a new tennis coach, so.
Mr. Mansfield also on this?
Oh, yes, yes. I meant to mention that, too. We've recognized Bill Mansfield in the past for his service in the National Guard. He has been with us, it probably has the date in there.
1995, I think it was.
1995 and just a tremendous individual, both for the students, the staff, me personally, just, you know, he's always a highlight of my day to stop and talk to Bill. So we really want to thank him for his service, both to our district and to our country and certainly when we do our retirement reception, he'll be invited.
Greer, the autistic program of tennis that Bob has introduced and made such a big difference for so many students, is that program going to end with Bob's?
Viva may know that, I'm not sure. Yeah?
He's still going to continue.
Yeah, I haven't heard him say he's going to stop that. Great, thank you.
My wish come true.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. On to new business. Can I have a motion for 11.1, special education placements?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I've reviewed the pack and recommend its adoption as presented.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.2, CSEA employee, employee benefit fund agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3, vendor agreement, St. Peter's School UPK program for the years 18, 19?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4, contractor agreement with Patricia Testler? RN?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.5, contractor agreement with Anita Fang, translator?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Is this, is this one a little late in coming or, you know, we're halfway through the school year and now we're finally settling on the translator? I, you know, I, I understand the, the need for one and how have we gotten by without one from September till now?
I became aware of this more recently, so I'm not sure if the student's been here since September, but this is an actual translator. We have language line, which you can do phone translations in any language, so we've been using that. So it's, it's actually almost impossible to find a Chinese translator and we're really excited that Jen met someone and, you know, networked and found this person.
So we're going to get better, we expect to have better results than we have using the software alone.
Sometimes you need a person in person.
No, the only reason I commented, it was a demonstration way back when, I won't say how long ago, at IBM, about a program they had developed and they presented it at a seminar and they, they put up a, on the screen, you know, two or three sentences and then they put up the translation. And everybody said, oh, that's great, except nobody speaks the language, you know. How do we know that translation is good? And somebody says, well, put in the, the result of their translation and translate it back to English. They did that and were embarrassed because the English question or the information was presented in the beginning wasn't quite the same as the one that came back going through the translation process. I'm sure we've gotten better than that, but, you know.
It's, it's really better to have somebody proofread and not just use Google Translate. And for Spanish, we're covered, we have plenty of people, but we really, for the more low incidence languages, we need to-
Place your trust entirely in computer-generated information is not always the right thing to do.
And Jen kind of stated in the special ed committee in the E&amp;L meeting that Chinese translators, they were really struggling and being, they're being pulled all over trying to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And she, she had stated this morning, oh, she was just lucky to have this.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any just other discussions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.6, health and welfare service agreements?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the 19, or 2019, 2020 budget development calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.8, the compensation rates for the 2019, 2020 vote officials?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
One day.
This time, we'll have public participation. Can I have a motion to open public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Public participation is now open for the second time. If anybody would like to address the board, they're pleased free to go to the microphone and state your name. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. There is no other matters deemed necessary by the board?
No, but I'd like to thank the nice turnout of Netherwood teachers and staff here tonight. That was great to see so many of you come out tonight.
And the rest of the board agrees. It's nice to see the teachers there. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. We're now adjourned.